How is it going guys and welcome back to a brand new stream. We're gonna go into the midst of it in just a second. Putting out some announcements, we added note lock sims to PLO trainer, we're gonna do that today. Looking at some pre flop adjustments and we're also going to train some three bet pots with our new design. Cool. How are you guys doing today? Today we're on no delay stream, just a little bit of a study and exploration session. Alright. I'm gonna start a poll over here on YouTube. Do you know what note locking is? Yes or no, starting the poll. We're going live, how's it going guys? No delay today, thanks for tuning in. Just gonna put out the announcements and then we're gonna head into some exploration and study session today. Alright. Let's get the ball rolling, sixty-two percent say yes, actually some people also know apparently. Okay, so let's talk about note lock sims. Note lock basically means when you run sims, you generally assume an equilibrium, so you mean, you assume everyone is playing balanced and unexploitable. But obviously that's not necessarily the reality, our opponents are gonna make mistakes all over the place and sometimes those explain, those mistakes can be pinpointed to one single node. For example, someone is over folding the big blind. So, so we might ask ourselves, how do we exploit that? So now that we know or assume that someone in the big blind is over folding, how do we take advantage of that? How, by how much are we going to expand our pre flop range and in which way? And so note locking basically means you run a sim and you lock someone's frequency, for example, you can also lock someone's combinations. But let's say you lock someone's frequency down, that so that they have to play a certain way. So let's say they have to fold the big blind too often. Instead of fifty percent, they might fold sixty percent or seventy percent. So if you head into PLO trainer and you head to the scenarios, you can check out the four max sims and in here we have an exploitative chapter now here. Exploitative and we have, I think across four and five card PLO, I'm just checking the updates here on Discord. We do have added now over fifty exploitative, one hundred big blind pre flop sims. So a lot of different scenarios, a lot of different possibilities here. I'm gonna give you one basic example. So let's say for example, we're playing here in the cutoff and the button is the na- an action player, right? So typically speaking, I'm gonna add another instance here. So typically speaking, if you look into a solution where looking at stars. Let me just compare this. It's okay. So this is the GTO solution, no not, no note locking here in this one. We open from the cutoff, as you can see right here, we're opening from the cutoff and now this is the strategy that the button is supposed to be playing when the rig is very low. So we see a fold of seventy-two percent, call of twenty and three bet of seven point four seven. Now note locking basically means you're assuming that the guy on the button plays differently. So in this instance, the guy on the button is actually gonna call forty percent and three bet twelve point two three. So basically the guy is very loose aggressive, almost a maniac or basically a maniac, calls a lot of hands and also three bets a bit too much. But the main difference here is the guy on the button is calling way too much. And that is obviously the description of a recreational player who just plays way too many hands overall and calls here forty percent on the button. So now what is the adjustment we're gonna be making in the cutoff when the guy on the button calls that often? So again, to compare this, usually the guy is supposed to call twenty percent on the button. This is the GTO solution, nothing has been touched, no note locking. And then heading over to this one, we can see now the button calls forty percent and there's a little lock sign right there. And also there is a lock or an info tab right there that indicates that these two frequencies, the call and the re-raising frequency have been note locked. If we hover over, it says locked to twelve percent and locked to forty percent. Right, so if we go back now to the cutoff, we can see how strategies are going to be shifting. So in the cutoff at equilibrium, we were supposed to open raise thirty percent of hands, you can see that right over here. So thirty point six seven percent is the GTO open raise frequency in the cutoff under this rig structure. And if we now go to the note locked sim, you can see we're now open raising only twenty-one point five percent. So basically half of your range falls away, you go from thirty, uh, well, two thirds, one third, you go from thirty to twenty. And one third of your raising range falls away and gets folded. So this is a very drastic adjustment and that's also why we added these uh, over fifty pre flop sims that are note locked because the adjustments are just so drastic. So when you play against a player on the button that plays way too many hands, especially calling a ton of hands, you should be raising way, way less often. And now with the new feature here in PLO trainer with the note locked sims, you can train and see exactly how this looks like when someone uh, calls this much on the button, as you can see here, forty percent and twelve percent. So that is against a loose, aggressive and well, a loose passive player that calls a ton of hands, also three bets a bit too much. If we now further open this up, look into another one, let's say you play against a big blind who is over folding, right? So big blind, uh, fold sixty for example, right there. The GTO solution in this instance would be the button opens. So now in this one, we're looking at a, an, 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 sorry, an equilibrium. Uh, there's no, there's no lock here anywhere visible. So you can see the big ban is supposed to fold forty-six percent and then three bet about nine, so that's the GTO frequency. And then in the note locked sim, when the button opens, now you can see again, the two note locked frequencies here are, the fold frequency now goes up to sixty percent. There's a little lock sign right there and the three bet frequency goes down to only eight percent or seven point nine. Again, the, the GTO one is like nine percent three bet and forty-six percent fold. And then adjusted here is sixty percent fold, so the guy is over folding under three betting is basically a nit in the big blind. If we now head over to the button and we can compare the frequency differences. So at equilibrium, you're opening on the button, uh, half your range, so fifty percent or forty-eight point nine eight percent. And comparing this to this solution, now we're opening up to fifty-seven percent, right? So this gives us a good indication of like, by how much are we shifting our open raising range? You can also explore the same thing for in the cutoff. Let's see if we're also, no, against the cutoff is not over folding, it's a single node only against, oh, it's a single node only against the button. So if the button is raising, we're gonna see this increased frequency and folds. Now some of your opponents are folding even more than sixty percent, so now you have an idea of like, how much you wanna expand. You probably wanna expand into sixty-five percent and so on. Uh, let's see what else we can work with here, so opening up this. So this is a big ban that is over folding. Then over here, we have, what if the button raises a lot of hands? Button RFI sixty, you can see I'm looking into the description, so there's a description right over there. Let's go back to this, there's a description right over here and I'm reading what the description says. For example, uh, big blind three bet twenty percent versus button, so an extremely aggressive maniac in the big blind or uh, tight aggressive, big blind fold sixty-five and three bet eight, we just saw that right now. Hmm, here we have a situation where the cutoff doesn't fold against a squeeze from the big blind, also certainly a possibility. And people that don't fold against squeezes. Again, all these player types are usually recreational players, so you have an idea on how to play against those pre flop and with those note lock frequencies. Here you can see the cutoff is open raising only twenty-five, so how do you play against the nit? For example, on the button, when you see a very tight open raising range. This is an interesting one, the small blind doesn't fold against a four bet. Let's have a look at this one, so it says, small blind no fold versus four bets. Uh, let's see what, what that exactly means, is it a blind on blind kinda situation? Ah, the small blind only four bets aces. So essentially it is, small blind opens, big ban three bets, now the small blind four bets. And you can see this frequency here is, uh, note lock to aces only. So what if he doesn't have aces? Yeah, so if he doesn't have aces, he never four bets. How do we adjust in the big ban against the four bet? Is this also true? No, it's not true like that, right? It is basically a blind on blind situation, small blind doesn't four bet without aces, I think that's the situation here. Yeah, just always has aces and now we're folding fifty percent. So I assume the main difference here is aside from folding a huge amount against the four bet and there are plenty of recreational players that only four bet aces, even some very tight regulars. But I would say also another difference is probably hmm, how much we are three betting. Uh, although the open raise frequency is only fifteen percent. Let me go back to the small blind, he's, he's opening thirty-five percent. And now we three bet very aggressively because we know that the opponent only four bets aces, so we can be a little bit more greedy and, uh, three bet pin for value. If we compare this with GTO, let's have a look. So guy opens from the small blind. Yeah, so blind on blind three bet here is at ten point six against a capable player, but if the guy in the small band only four bets aces, we're increasing the frequency. And we're also increasing how often we fold once we do get a four bet, right? So we're getting four bet by aces here only, folding fifty percent. And in the equilibrium solution, if the guy four bets, we're folding twenty-seven percent. Yeah, these only aces four bets is definitely an interesting one to look into. Because the solver will find a lot of marginal continues against four bets, but if your opponents have AA only, you have to be pretty drastic. I see small mind doesn't fold and four bets aces only. Uh, these are, these note lock sims are available for four and for five cards. So in the top here, you can see there's a little toggle button, five card, you can click on it and it brings you into the five card trainer. I haven't looked yet at the five card solutions, let's have a look. The five card note lock solutions. So again, you click to scenario right there. Let's see, this thing is loading. And then you can go to four max. Let's just double check this. So where do we have the exploitative solutions? Do we already have them for five card PLO, let's have a look. Ah, it's only for four card PLO, let me double check. Under four, ah, yeah, exactly, we only have it for four card PLO at the moment. Although it shouldn't be a problem to necessarily add it for five card PLO at some point as well. I see for five card PLO, we have other new pre flop solutions, for example, heads up on coin, two hundred big plans deep, full pot and limp. If you are in our Discord, you can always see the updates that are, that are getting posted. To give you an idea, if you look at this, this is under the software update channel. You can always see what kinda updates have been posted, so today, um, today you can see that Luke posted this and you can see the, um, updates for four card PLO. So we have new pre flop solutions over here, some for heads up and some of them are exploitative sims. We also have pre flop mixed stack sizes, that's an interesting one, I wanna look into this as well. And then we have new post flop solutions for pots with one player folding pre flop to the squeeze. Squeeze scenario, so this one. And then in the five card trainer, we have new pre drop solutions for heads up and new post of solutions for three bet pots heads up. Got it, okay. So going back to four card PLO here for a moment, yesterday I was working on, uh, three bet pots anyway, so I'm gonna head into this right now. It was pretty interesting, like it's, it's not very easy to play well, obviously. So I'm gonna go into the train function right there and I'm going to choose um, three bet pots. I'm gonna choose three bet pots, uh, between the button and the small blind, sort of a bread and butter spot. And we're gonna start here with a dynamic texture, something along the lines of this. And start plugging away, so this is hundred big blinds. If I click on start, we can basically choose between a couple of different modes. In this case, as you can see, there's a time bank attached to this thing. So we have a time bank right now, which is fifteen seconds, you can change it to seven, you can have no time bank at all. And you can pause the game either after each decision or after a mistake only or just never. I'm gonna go with fifteen second time bank and pausing the game after each decision, so we can thoroughly review what's going on. So we're gonna get started. This first hand, by the way, as you can see, it automatically chose check because I didn't take any action. But basically you can see the EV difference right there. And if it was a mistake, a blunder, an accuracy or correct, the different labels are listed over here. This one was a mistake, which is a mist- a mistake is basically, uh, you're losing between one point five and three percent of the pot. And the EVs for each action are visible here uh, or on the site in the little history tab right there. And if you wanna study the spot in more detail, you can click on this one and it opens up the node with the hand already plugged in. And if you wanna look into the, uh, matrix, then you can see right there, king, king, jack, four, like, this is the king, king combos with the king high over the flush blocker. And as we can see, when you have king, king with a flush blocker in red, almost all the combos are gonna bet, these are all bad folds. Uh, only when you have like king, king, three, three, you're gonna start having some checks. But aside from that, usually this is one of your prime bluff candidates, king, king with a spade blocker. As you can see, it's very red over here in the, uh, in the matrix view. I'm gonna head here into some training right away, there's a question. Uh, any plans for having training, training results reported, um, and saved? Yes, so right now, what we're doing in the trainer is we are in the last efforts to start saving your training results. So step one for us is going to be to, to track your results, uh, in the backend. So very soon, it's always hard to predict timelines, but I think like one or two weeks, something along those lines. We're gonna start tracking all the results in the backend and then we're gonna start displaying it in a front end dashboard. The dashboard is coming after November. But the tracking already starts in November. And so when you train, like let's say in a week or two, when you start training, all the stuff will be tracked and then visible in an organized dashboard, um, very soon. Okay, we're gonna click spacebar for the next hand, so jack, jack, seven, seven, we have middle set, no backup. Usually I would think we probably wanna bet these really good hands because there are a lot of medium strong hands that will check back, so I'm gonna go for the bet, but it's probably close. Yeah, so you can see this is in, in accuracy, difference is very small. So one thing I pay attention to is if it's a small EV difference, it really doesn't matter as much, like both lines are viable. I'm more paying attention to what are the blunders and mistakes, where a bigger portion of the pot is lost in the action. But I do wonder how sets overall are playing, what the pattern is. So if I open this thing up right there, you can see that sets are betting here sixty percent. A middle set with a straight draw blocker betting sixty percent of the time. Um, so not betting all of those, uh, for sure. I'm gonna move on to the next hand. Top pair in a rap backdoor flush draw. So here we kinda wanna ask ourselves how much value is in their betting and getting it in? I mean, we do need a good amount of protection, but check calling is also not bad. I'm gonna go for check call, but I could also see betting as an option, so this is correct, EV difference is seventeen. And I would say this hand probably is gonna play, um, check call on the flop because we do wanna have straight coverage on certain turns once we play check call. So what I also do is I wanna see how the hand is then playing out. So in this case, we're playing check facing the bet, we're gonna go ahead and call. Alright, so we played it forward right there, button is betting half pot on the flop and then our hand goes purely into call. And so I always ask myself, what is the functionality of the hand? In this case, probably getting it in the flop is not a huge mistake, but we are also often behind against the flush draw and some sort of straight draw. And when we play check call, our range, our three bet range is certainly suffering coverage on straightening cards. So in order to not be overrun, we wanna check call some of the straight draws. But we don't wanna check call the very best straight draws because they have so much value in just getting in more money. So let's say we had something like ace, ace, ten, eight with spades. Those hands are all betting the flop because they're just so valuable, so we're not sacrificing this sort of power hand. Next hand. Ace is king, jack. So we have a jack blocker and of course the ace of spades, I think we just got a bad fold. Uh, I'm asking myself, could I check call? I don't think so, we don't have enough playability, we don't turn anything of value. So we're just betting the flop and then folding versus jam, so in this case, we're betting, if we get ripped, we're gonna have we're gonna have no backdoor flush draw. And our hand goes into the bet folding hand, uh, range, it looks like some of the hands find the marginal stack off, but us holding the ace of spades and a diamond blocker, let's see. So we have the ace of spades, we're blocking the combo draws, we're gonna run into a made hand really often or big combo draw. Our opponent doesn't have the naked nut flush draw and jams because we blocked that and that's sort of the only hand we would do okay against. But for him to jam the flop, he's, he's usually gonna have two pair or he's gonna have a big draw. And against both, we're pretty cooked. So I think that's the reason why if we actually have, if we don't have the ace of spades, you can see that we are actually stacking off with the jack of spades in the hopes to run into the nut flush draw with very marginal side card equity. You know, the, the nut flush draw and, I don't know, like a gut shot or something along those lines, maybe ace, ten, ten, nut flush draw, which we still do fine against, I mean, we're actually favored against some of those hands. So let's say imposition has the nut flush draw. And he doesn't have, uh, two pair. He's gonna have like, doesn't have a set, let's say he has, hmm, doesn't have aces obviously. Doesn't have a rap. Some of the more marginal hands. Let's say it doesn't have an open, the straight draw. I mean, we're definitely hoping for something that goes a bit lower here. Something like, you know, one of these hands, like one pair with a nut flush draw, no straight draw. I wonder what he would do with like ace, ten, ten, four with a nut flush draw. Yeah, something like this, if he jams ace, ten, ten, four, and we have ace, ace, king, jack, like we're looking pretty okay against this kinda hand. Ace, king, king, queen, it's a tricky one. I think if we bet, we can't really fold. So I guess I'm not a fan of betting, we're gonna start with a check, we also don't block any of the continues. It is one of those hands that you have to play check call and it's gonna be super bad to realize your equity and, you know, it's kind of a nightmare hand. So let's say we check and he bets half, we're gonna play check call and the EV in this case is about one big blind. So if we play turn river perfect, we're gonna gain about one big blind in this already large pot of thirty-six big blinds. It is a tough one, like we can't really give it up. Um, but I guess maybe against a super nit or something, you can play check fold. It's not gonna be a money, a money printer, here we have nut gutter, queen high flush draw, no pair. I mean, you can't really go wrong, you can bet and get it in, you can check and play check call, I don't think check raise is that great. I think I'm gonna go with just bet, no, bet is actually a little bit wrong, it's an inaccuracy, so again, we're losing about, uh, we're losing less than one point five percent of the pot. Yeah, I suppose like you do wanna have some flush draws in your check calling range, this could be a good candidate. So if you have king, queen, jack, ten. It's a good one to check call, we don't sacrifice too much in terms of value for not, for not getting it in and you wanna have some coverage. Here I think our blockers are a bit too marginal, no spade and no pair, just check folding. Actually wrong, we're, with the backdoor diamond blocker, we are gonna bet fold this hand. So, yeah, we don't have to look this one up, okay, that's an interesting one. Ace, king, jack, seven, we have the seven of spades, jack, a hearts blocker, I guess we're just betting. We can still turn two pair and get it in and obviously we're bad folding on the flop. Top pair blocker, no spade, hmm, one diamond. We do have a ten blocker though, we could play bad fold here as well, which is correct. This is certainly bad folding as well, pretty good blockers there. This one, this one goes for a check. Don't know yet what we're gonna do then, probably check call for low EV. No, we're also bad folding even this one, so there are some non spade hands. I think they do require backdoor diamonds to justify betting. It's probably just a little bit too weak to check call. So our form of realizing our equity is just betting and hoping we can turn something nice and certainly bet folding the flop. Uh, would you consider the small rap with a backdoor flush draw a medium strong hand? I mean, in, like when your opponent, the thing is when your opponent jams, you're gonna be an underdog, so you wanna ask yourself, is, like is, do I achieve the most? With this hand, like you, you can get it in profitably, it's not like you cannot get it in profitably, but I think what you wanna think more about is your game plan on a bigger scale or a bigger picture. So the flop is nine, seven deuce, right? Let's go back into the study mode here for a second. So the board is difficult, right? It's not like a board where out of position is just like super happy betting everything because imposition can have two pair and raps and straight draws. And even though out of position has these like over pairs and flush draws, which are great. The thing is when imposition calls against a bet, there are some pretty dicey turn cards when the straight completes. So bigger picture wise, you wanna think about the fact that when it goes check, check, how do, how does your range play on a six, on a ten, on a jack, on an eight, right? If you have just always aces there, it's gonna be really easy to exploit you, your opponent can just start betting. And you always lose the pot. So when it goes check, check, you wanna have coverage. When it goes you check and he bets and you call, you don't always wanna have over pair backdoor flush draw. You also wanna have some flushes, you also wanna have some straights on some of the turn completing cards for each respectively. So it's about coverage and understanding that in all those different nodes, you wanna have different kind of hand classes. You wanna be able to have a flush when you play check call, you wanna be able to have a straight when it goes check call. And the same thing is true for when it goes check, check. So these passive lines are very often, especially with lower stakes players uh, or beginners, they're very often underappreciated, right? So they, they end up putting in a bunch of hands into their betting hand, betting range on the flop. But whenever it goes check, check or check call, they're super exposed and they just end up playing super face up and over folding in a lot of the notes that are following. So one thing that we saw in the Cash Game World Championship is that the best players did an extremely good job at maintaining board coverage and following MDF principles across the board. So minimum defense frequencies, like let's say you check, right? And your opponent bets half, now you have to continue a very significant part of your range because your opponent doesn't risk very much. Right, you can see we are continuing here. Uh, we're only, we're only folding thirty-two percent, right? So we have to find a lot of calls and some raises. And what most people do is they just think a lot about betting on the flop when they're, when they're the three better, but they think very little about checking. And then their fold frequency here is gonna be something like fifty or sixty percent. And so imposition can exploit that by just betting half pot with the entire range or even betting one third and just really crushing that checking range. This is very common at lower end mid stakes, if people just check fold and neglected the passive line. Just to clarify on that as well, let me show you this. Poker is basically, you have a game tree of all those different branches and you're looking to play well in all the and you're looking to play well in all the branches. And the better you understand that, the easier it is to exploit your opponents, because you start recognizing that your opponents are not playing that great in all those branches. So, when you look at this, right, so minimum defense frequencies. And this basically tells us, uh, how often do we need to continue against what kind of sizing? Right, so let's say I put in bets half pot. Now in this case, we need to continue sixty-seven percent of our range, otherwise we become easily exploitable. And it's not like your opponent has to be that good to exploit us here, it's just like, if you fold half your range, I mean, you're just gonna be leaking a ton. If you don't have any flushes when you, when you play check call, you're also gonna be easy, easy to be exploitable. And the more you understand that, the more easy it is to see your opponents doing the same mistakes you, you used to make, and then you start exploiting them on all those different runouts. Let's say the flop goes check, check here, and the turn is a flushing card, now your opponent is just like destroyed, right? Like, that's, that happens very often at the lower stakes. Okay, so here we have top set, backdoor nut flush draw. When you have top set, I mean, you're blocking your opponent stabbing range quite a bit, so I don't mind betting, but let's see how this one plays out. So we are checking, but it's not a big deal, you can see the EV difference, probably sets are betting, you know, something around half the time. So top set, uh, actually, top set is checking a ton. I guess we generate a lot of folds that way by betting. So we, we wanna check top set way more often than middle set or bottom set. Because we have less, like, our opponent has less continues. Okay, that's an interesting takeaway. If we look back into the thing, and we look in the bottom, um, into the categories, we can see this breakdown here. So top set is checking eighty-eight, middle set seventy-three, bottom set twenty-four. So it's pretty nice heuristic there. Okay, we can keep that in mind. So as we're training, we're basically looking to improve our knowledge of what's going on here. Okay, so here we have top pair, backdoor flush draw. Uh, I don't think we can really go wrong, but probably check. If we bet and get it in, it's not that bad, but it's, it's not ideal obviously. So check is fine, here we have top two, backdoor flush draw. I think just betting and trying to build a pot and get it in, especially with the spade blocker and the backdoor diamonds, like, we have enough turns, but we can just, but we can still shove, I would think, so we're betting, which seems good. And top two pair with a flush draw blocker is betting ninety-six percent. So the more vulnerable hands here, we're not slow playing them, we're just betting at ninety-six percent. Here we have the super nuts. So this is actually with the backdoor nut flush draw and the top two, I think this is probably so strong that you are gonna go for check. Check is correct, and the EV difference here is quite substantial, right? So half, more than half a big blind in EV difference. And so how do we play against a stab? I can easily see this hand playing just check call on the flop, um, because it does do so well. So if we check, I put in bets half, we have ace, ace, nine, seven. Then we can see here, even without the backdoor flush draw, we will just check call the flop with top two nut flush draw. So this is gonna be a good one to slow play with. Yeah, exactly, it's about range construction. An easy way to, um, an easy way to get stuck in improve, in not improving your game basically, is to think a bit too much about your own hand. And not about like, what is your, what's going on with your range and your opponent's range. So here we have a top pair of rap backdoor flush draw. There's a good amount of protection required against ace high and king high and queen high. So I don't mind just betting, and then getting it in. And here again, you can see, you can go either way, you can play check call, you can play bet. Even check raising is not out of the window. Can't really go too wrong with this hand, and you can see it based on the EV difference. So I pay a lot of attention to EV difference and pattern recognition. This hand is really strong, I just wanna build the pot. Uh, I don't really need this hand in my check calling range or check raising range, I think I just wanna bet. There's so much value in getting called by worse, and then we have so many ways to be very happy putting in all the money on whatever runouts. So we wanna bet. Top two here, very vulnerable, we saw before, top two is betting a ton, especially with a straight draw blocker, but I think also without a straight draw blocker. So, top two pair, straight draw blocker, no flusher blocker, sorry. Ninety-seven percent betting. So the pattern here is the more vulnerable hands like top two, they are betting very, very frequent, where if you have a set, you might consider checking. Queen, ten, eight, eight, I mean, we have a lot of blockers going on here, but if we do get ripped, it's gross, like, are we gonna fold this hand? I, I would probably go for check and just go check call. Um, because bet folding this hand is not that great. Um, so yeah, pretty significant EV difference there as well. Ace, queen, queen, eight, so we're kinda stacking the blockers here, the eight of spades is a key blocker, the two queens are some blockers, and then the queen of diamonds is a blocker, so probably just bet folding this hand. Uh, king, queen, queen, ten, if we bet, we will get the money in. We check, we can play check call and see the turn first. Not really sure, I wouldn't be thrilled to get the money in necessarily, but I could see, I could see it. Uh, yeah, okay, so it's an, an EV difference of zero exactly. So it, it prefers betting. I can't imagine we're ever folding this hand against a jam, so king, king, queen, ten with diamonds. Right, so if we do bet and get ripped, we are gonna get the money in. So it can go both ways. So once again, it's not really about how many hands do you play accurately, it's more, do you sort of understand the patterns and the reasons for taking each line? This is an amazing hint obviously on the flop, but we do need some protection of backdoor diamonds, the ace, the king, the queen. I just wanna bet and put money into the middle, and also just deny equity from those overcards. Ace, ace, jack, deuce, backdoor nut flush draw, it's not a hand that would be too happy bet folding, so I'm gonna go with check. It looks to bet, okay. I, I can't imagine we are bet folding, we have a deuce blocker, the backdoor nut flush draw. We don't block the nut flush draw, which could be one of the bluff jamming hands or semi bluff jamming hands, so let's see what's going on with this one. Ace, ace, jack, deuce with diamonds. So the hand wants to bet and get it in. This is sort of a hand class I'm not really comfortable deciding what to do with. It's a bit a tricky one, because we don't have these like great blockers going on, but we s- it's kind of a hand class, it's like both lines are not really satisfying. If we check, what should we really do? If we bet and we get raised, it's a tricky one, and, and it looks like we're just betting, and when we get raised, we have to sort of slightly better than break even, um, stack off here against our opponent. It's like an overpair backdoor diamond draw, so if I put in, um, ace, ace, for example, with diamonds, but we don't have the spades. We also don't have a straight draw, SD. We don't have a second, so we have aces with the nut flush draw. No, with backdoor diamonds, don't have spades, and we don't have a straight draw. And we also don't have, um, two pair or a set. I mean, especially when we have a spade blocker and a straight blocker, a straight draw blocker at the same time, which is back on that fold equity. And I would imagine this hand class is just gonna get it in then, in case we have to. Yeah. So the pattern there on the flop, right, is on the left-hand side, we can see the same hand class, but when we don't bet, here, and then here when we do bet and get it in. And the pattern is pretty obvious, that we have the spade blocker, right, the ten of spades right there, six of spades right there. And, um, and the spade blocker also works as a straight draw blocker, so we increase fold equity that way. And if we don't have that card, we're just gonna go for a check. And I would think with an overpair and the backdoor flush draw, we're probably gonna play check call, because we do have to continue a wide part of our range. So we're gonna play check call, trying to turn a diamond, maybe a straight draw, and take it from there. Okay, next hand is king, king, four, four. It's just like not, not really anything going on, we're gonna start with a check. I mean, we still have set outs and backdoor diamonds, so I think it's another, um, low-ish EV check call. Yep. Here we have ace, king, king, five, so key blocker is a spades. Can't really do anything in terms of once we check, so I think we're just bet folding the hand. It's correct, ace, ace, nine, four, no spades, no straight draw blocker, maybe just bet folding with the nine? No, we're just check folding, the side cards are too bad, we only have the nine to work with, okay, so that's like overdoing it there. This hand can't really do wrong, we can bet and get it in, we can check call. Not necessarily a huge fan of check raising, probably just gonna go with a bet and, um, continue against the raise with the king high flush draw, but it looks like it prefers to play the check, the, the check line. I do assume it's gonna be to check, um, it's gonna be to check call. Yeah, okay. Top two, usually top two betting at a high frequency, not a big deal, this hand, pretty weird. It's almost, it's basically too weak to check call. So we're probably just gonna take the ten, five of spades as key blockers and bet fold the hand, yeah. It's very significant EV difference there, really wants to just play the blockers and, and go for the bet fold. Uh, king, queen, queen, nine, we have the diamond right there, and the nine blocker, probably just good enough to bet fold. No, just check folding, uh, king, queen, queen, nine. I guess, against half, we're gonna call, king, queen, queen, nine, no spades. Yeah, we're gonna call for about a big blind of value. Open ender backdoor flush draw, spade blocker, we can bet and get it in, we can check, could even check raise. Uh, don't mind just checking. I don't know, I could see the solver also just betting. Yeah, let's bet and just build the pot. It has enough playability, and it also has enough immediate fold equity with the, the two diamonds and the eight, and the six of spades. This hand is check calls, this hand, I wanna bet, top pair, nut flush draw, all the side cards. It's not a strong enough hand to slow play or anything. Hmm, interesting, we do wanna check. I would, if I check this hand, uh, I would be check raising this hand, we only have one pair. And we have very good equity here. Yeah, so this is one of the check raises. Yeah, I guess so far we haven't really explored the check raising line. And we haven't seen many hints that go check raise, but this is one of them. If I would think about the patterns, it would be once I bet and get called. There are still a good amount of turn cards which are uncomfortable, straight completing backdoor diamond cards. So some of these hands that don't have that sort of playability, maybe just wanna go for check raise instead. Ace, ace, four, deuce. We can bet and get it in, or check call. With this one, without a straight drop blocker or, or a middling spade, I'm thinking of check calling. No, it wants to go bet, ace, ace, four, deuce, it wants to go bet. Ace of spades with diamonds, but we have low diamonds. It wants to go bet and then folding versus raise. It's a function of the low backdoor diamonds. Not enough value to go for check call with the four high diamonds, so we are turning it into a pair and a flush draw blocker bluff. Thank you for the streams, hey, what's up, Mr. Pancake? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next hand, we, here we have a set and a flush draw. Could be slow playing, um, I mean, we don't block six, eight, ten, eight, middling flush draws, nine X. I think it can go either way, we're gonna go with check, it's a pretty powerful hand, check is correct. This is a weird one, I don't feel like I wanna bet, a lot of weird stuff is, is gonna happen if I do that. Hmm, gonna start with a check. Against the bet, I mean, we could rip, it feels bad, but check calling also feels bad, so I would assume, I would assume, what is the solver gonna do? Honestly, probably check call. It just feels so rough to be, to be jamming ace, jack, check, three. Um, we check, we face the bet, and we have, yeah, it is gonna check jam. We're not, we're really hoping we will see a fold. How often is the player gonna fold? So if we check raise the flop, supposed to fold forty-two percent. Basically, when we check raise, we're risking, uh, two, like, uh, a pot-sized raise, so he has to continue about, yeah, he has to continue sixty percent of his range. He can fold a lot. Are people folding forty-two against check rates? It depends on the stakes that you're playing. A lot of the ti- I mean, at mid-stakes and higher, for sure, they will find the bluffs. This is kind of a weird one. But we can't really do that wrong, betting, getting it in, checking, check calling. I'm gonna go with a bet, and just start denying equity in future blockers. This one, I guess, just bet folding. Ace, queen, queen, nine, I mean, we can't really check call, so we're just gonna utilize those blockers. The queen of spades, the nine of clubs, two queens, a diamond blocker. Sort of a combination of blockers basically going on there, this is really bad, just check and fold. This is also really bad, yeah, we have the nine, but all the other cards are really bad to hold. So we're just check folding, this one is an amazing hand, I wanna start building the pot. Ace, king, ten, nine, nine of diamonds, not really sure what's going on here, but I would feel pretty bad bet folding, so I guess check and see what we can turn, if we can get a free card. Hmm, doesn't mind betting, it looks like, ace, king, ten, nine, no draws. Can't stack off with this hand. Top two, backdoor flush draw, just betting, building the pot. This hand again can go either way, but probably prefers to check. Mid pair, low flush draw, I would probably just put this hand more into my check calling range to have some coverage, not too excited about building the pot or getting it in on the flop. Yeah, seems to be accurate. Okay, let's head over and, and look into some turn cards as well. We might also, we might take a bit of a different flop as well. You guys in the chat, there's no delay, like, what kind of flop do you wanna see for a three-bet pot? And then we're gonna also look into different turn lines, passive and aggressive ones. So what kind of flop are you looking to see, suggestions? Just type out the, the board texture, and also if it's two-toned or not. Uh, when is your Black Friday sale taking place? I'm gonna purchase the yearly package, um, you can keep your eyes open for next week, starting next week. Yeah, this, I mean, this year you definitely wanna check out the, the bonus, because we've really worked a lot on that. Paired rainbow mitt. So, rainbow paired, for example, like a nine high, an eight high, something like that. Hmm. Let's start with maybe something like eight, seven, seven. So, you know, we three-bet from the small blind button calls, flop comes eight, seven, seven rainbow, right? And so now the first thing I think about is like, what is the bet frequency? We're gonna go for a one-third, sizing-wise. Um, and I don't think we can bet that often, because, well, depends if the board is connected, right, eight, seven, seven and eight, eight, three is a bit different. But let's start off with the actual report, so we're gonna go into reports right there. And say, okay, we are in a three-bet pot, right? And I'm gonna say, show me the rainbow paired boards. And the ones that are, let's say, nine high. These are, well, nine high and paired, so it's a nine, it's paired. Our bet frequency is, is actually ninety-four percent on nine high boards. How does this compare with eight high boards? Eighty-eight on eight, on paired, on paired, on, uh, on eight, uh, on eight-eight boards, or on eight high paired boards? So very high bet fre- So very high bet frequencies, um, the bet frequency goes down when we look into these connected, uh, eight high boards, right here. But not even by that much, even eight, eight, seven there. I mean, going back to rainbow for a second, so rainbow paired eight high, say for example, our bet frequency remains ninety percent. We don't seem to like eight, five, five, eight, six, six and eight, seven, seven as much, but we're still betting very, very often. So let's start off with eight, seven, seven. And see what we can work from here on, and then we're gonna look into these other suggestions, so eight, seven, seven, starting the session. We now know the bet frequency seventy percent, so a lot of different hands are betting. Um, I'm just gonna play a couple of hands intuitively, like how I would usually play them, and then we go from there, first hand already already mistake, although again, the EV difference is whatever, if we do bet, we obviously have to continue against the raise here, by the way, with this hand. But I'm gonna open the study mode right away, and I'm gonna see as a first thing, like, what kind of categories are generally looking to, um, check versus betting, so trips are betting, we're also the time, obviously. And overpair betting seventy percent, and if we do have additional equity, like a straight draw, a board pair, or straight draw blockers, the, the, the frequency is relatively high, but as soon as we have no side cards that interact with the board, we're gonna start checking quite a bit. I would also imagine the same thing is true with a backdoor flush draw, so say, for example, we have eight, eight, sorry, ace, ace, without a seven, without an eight, right? And if we do have, um, two backdoor flush draws, our bet frequency is eighty-eight percent. And if we don't have a backdoor flush draw, our bet frequency goes from eighty-eight to fifty-five, and then we usually have side cards, so if we have no backdoor flush draw and no straight draw, then our bet frequency is at fifty-one percent, and if we don't have a blocker to a straight draw, so a no nine, ten, six, five. I mean, we're really looking at low frequencies there in terms of betting, so we're gonna keep that in mind, okay, so ace, king, jack, jack. It's an interesting one, the two jacks are obviously somewhat straight draw blockers, I think a lot of these hands, they can go like either way. I would probably personally just check and then play check call and we have some reasonable ways to bluff catch, given that we are blocking the straight and some runouts. But it's definitely not a, port where we're super happy. Here, pretty nice hand, I'm gonna start betting, two backdoor flush draws, inside straight draw, ton of stuff going on. We don't mind building the pot against other straight draws and floats. I guess the question is like, what happens if we get raised, right, so let's say we get raised small in the flop, right? Polarized raising range, small in the flop, we have like a king, king, nine, five. We're just gonna call, keep all the bluffs in, and then things become dicey, let's say we do call, the turn is something like a, hmm. Let's say it's a good card for imposition ten of diamonds, right, so full range check on this card, I would say. Yep, and then imposition can bet one quarter or pot, but it's gonna probably be one quarter with a lot of different hands. So after raising the flop, you can bet one quarter on this turn with ninety-five percent of their range, so basically just betting everything. And putting a lot of pressure that way onto a bear over pair. And then the king, king, nine, five with diamonds, we're not gonna jam into this polarized range, we're just gonna call and see how the river develops. So that is going to be the plan, okay. Ace, king, queen, ten, we have nothing, hmm, we only have one straight drop blocker in the form of a ten, so maybe checking, but I could also see reasons to just bet. Maybe bet as a bluff, yeah. I mean, we do have, um, all our cards are functioning as backdoor flush draw blockers. Our opponent is gonna be floating us and bluff raising us with backdoor flush draw stuff. The nuts, so in this instance, we block two backdoor flush draws and the straight draws holding the nine, so I could see reasons for just checking this hand, could see. Yes, it will, it wants to check, you know, so the EV difference is not really there, it's zero. But I think the concept is important, like, if you never have hands like this in their checking range, or you don't know why they belong into your checking range, then you end up being very unbalanced. It's a good one to check, and then here, I mean, we do have one flush draw blocker, two, three flush draw blockers, and then two straight draw blockers, so I think betting, looks like we wanna check, but, so I suppose we're gonna check call with four overs and a not gutter. Let's see, we check, imposition bets, we can't fold much against a one-third pot size sizing, right, we're folding only twenty percent because of, because of MDF. So the ace, king, jack, ten, backdoor flush draw is gonna call, I mean, obviously when we have two backdoor flush draws, what if we have one? Then probably depends on the quality of the backdoor flush draw. So backdoor not flush draw, yes. What if we have two of a suit exactly, like the king of diamonds, ten diamonds? Hmm, not that big of a fan, it looks like we wanna have the backdoor not flush draw. Which in this case is the case, so this, this hand would qualify. Here we have top pair blocker, hmm, but we have no straight draw blocker, could also go check call. I don't really see a lot of reasons to, like, we don't need that much protection, we are still good on the king, the queen, the eight, the ace. Checking here. Um, again, top pair, probably just checking, in this case, we don't have the backdoor flush draw, so we need a bit more protection. But we're also gonna get floated more often when we do, when we do, actually, we are betting, yeah, I was intuitively thinking of betting, just because the two hearts, I guess, mean that we do benefit a bit more from denying equity, and we also get called a little bit lighter. Yeah, I mean, what happens when we bet and get raised and we're holding like the eight, right, so ace, king, queen, eight, for example. We are actually just giving up, we're looking for more robust equity, we're looking for, you know, the king, the king, king, nine, five, at least had the kings to hit, the straight to hit, the backdoor flush draws to hit. This kind of hand class, I mean, first of all, our opponent is gonna use an eight to bluff raise, so that's not great, it's gonna push him more towards value. And against top of range, we're just dead, I mean, almost dead, we only have the two eights remaining. Where a hand like, you know, ace, ace, jack, ten, is gonna have a lot more equity against the value portion. Here is king, queen, nine, very marginal hand in all regards, but how bad can just betting be, just trying to take the pot down. Queen, queen, eight, six, two backdoor flush draws, some backdoor straight draw stuff going on, I mean, it's a pretty nice hand, I probably wanna bet, we benefit also from folding at an ace, right, king. I wonder like if any of those hands are just jamming the flop, um, versus a raise, yeah, so diamonds. So it looks like this one might just jam the flop, because it does benefit a lot from protection. And it does have, it, it retains equity against seven X still, we hit an eight, backdoor flush draw, backdoor straight draws. So actually, this hand is betting the flop in order to just jam against the raise. Ace, ten, ten, three, backdoor flush draw. Two backdoor flush draws, just betting, I guess, and denying the king, the queen, the jack. If we get raised, we can call. The nuts with a ton of blockers, could be a good check. We wanna bet, but blocking the ten, nine, blocking the, the six, five, it's not a bad one to just check. Here we're probably just betting, no, it looks to be a check fold, king, king, three, three. Um, probably in favor of just checking, I mean, there's so many runouts, are pretty dicey. Because we don't have a straight draw. This one is probably just too strong to check, you wanna start call, like, if we bet, we can call by the other over pairs, like kings and queens. Some straight draws that float us, we wanna start betting, and then if we get raised, I think just calling, we don't retain as much equity against value with this stuff. It's interesting, we're bluff jamming, kind of bluff jamming, I guess, with, um with no backdoor flush draws, we're just like, let's hope he doesn't have a seven and we're just all in. And with the rest, we can just call and play a bit more comfortably on turns and rivers. These sort of ASI hands are a bit tricky for me to play here. Um what is, what are these four over cards doing in general? Just checking. We need to straight draw basically. We need to straight try to start working on stuff, okay. King, king, ten, five. Hmm, I don't know, like, I think it doesn't really matter that much, but I wouldn't mind just checking. Yeah, it doesn't really matter that much. We now know these hands are checks, and this is gonna be a bet, because there's so much value and then call against the raise, and this one, don't mind just betting. It looks like king, king, seven, five. I mean, king, king, seven, five is kind of awkward once we get called, because they're, it's kind of weird what kind of turns roll off there. King, queen, five, four, pretty bad hand. I probably just bet and try to win the pot, it's like an inaccuracy there. Ace, jack, jack, seven, uh, this one, I'm pretty comfortable building a pot, also unblocking kings and queens. We have some pretty nice plans for turns and rivers, because we do block the straight. Okay, so let's say we are betting the flop, we're now gonna move forward into turns. Because usually what happens is we are betting flop, um, and we're getting called. And the turn can be quite uncomfortable, so let's say the turn is an, an over card, which is uh, pretty static, like a queen. So here on this turn, we're not polarizing, we're basically saying, hey, we bet small in the flop and just got called. So now all your floats, like the straight draws and the marginal over pairs, they're in a bit of a tricky spot against a second barrel. And we can keep betting with aces here for value, because the turn is really good for us. So that's why we use the one-third sizing option. King, ten, nine, eight, I mean our hand is okay, I would probably just check. Are we making a ton of better hands fold, like, probably not. It looks like we do wanna keep betting and putting jacks under pressure. Let's see what's going on with this one. So king, ten, nine, eight. First of all, let's see the overall frequency, I think that could also be a clue there, the overall frequency is seventy-five point eight, so we can't really be that wrong, just keep betting stuff. This hand wants to bet, and if the river is like a deuce or something, what are we gonna do? King, ten, nine, eight. We're like fake blocking, bet, bet with king, ten, nine, eight. And so what are we folding out there? I mean, is the queen folding? I suppose the queen is probably folding some, twenty-three percent, twenty-four percent. I guess like tens or something, or nines are folding. Kings is not folding. I mean, it's a bit of a counterintuitive hand. Thank you on all the progress with the trainer, appreciate this very much, the games I play and many people are potting on these paired boards, interesting to see after starting the, yeah, I mean, that sounds like a good game to begin with. Um, the good thing is like when your opponents are playing this sort of potting strategy, it is true for a lot of different textures, in a lot of life games. When you see multi-way pots, people just potting. First of all, they're making your life really easy, because it allows you to just fold a bunch of hands, and when you actually have a good hand, you make more money. Uh, but the main advantage I see there is, when you start using the correct sizings, they really don't know what's going on, because they kind of have learned intuitively to play against a large sizing. Whether it is paired or not. But then when you use a small sizing, they just tend to like overfold so much. So a, a lot of life PLO players, they think, oh, well, I wanna bet really big always, because I need to deny equity, but they don't really understand the benefits of betting small. In multi-way pots, to deny equity of your opponents and really put them into a blender with the medium strong hands. Here we bet flop one-third, we turn a really strong hand, and we can still get value from straight draws or weaker queen. So we wanna keep betting, here, kind of same story, I mean, my opponent might have turned a, a queen, they have ten, nine combos. It looks like this one without blockers, maybe we wanna check. We might feel less comfortable going bet, bet. Ace is six, five, here we retain equity against some seven X combos, and we do a bit better on some straight completing cards, so I do wanna bet. Betting this one, uh, here we bluff the flop with the nut gutter, do we wanna continue? Not really, I think we want our opponent to have this kind of stuff, but we also wanna have some bluffs, is this one of them? Hmm, no, it's, it's going to be a check. If we wanna bluff, it's more a hand like this, I would think, where we do block some stuff. I'm not really sure what we're bluffing against, I guess, like tens or nines or something, or maybe setting up a river jam or something. So we are betting the ace, jack, ten, eight. I suppose if the river is a nine, well, a nine, we make a straight. On the six, are we barreling, ace, jack, ten, eight? So what is the plan, say, we bet to turn here for one-third and the river comes in a deuce, say, for example, I mean what are we doing? So we're just, the plan with this one is just like bet turn pot river for stacks. We're basically using some of the eight X combos to bluff the river and, on, on those runouts, let's see what hands are bluffing here, so we don't have seven, eight, eight, queen, queen, or any queen. Or deuces, no thin aces. Looks like king X is like bluff jam, and not bluff jam, value jamming thinly. So if you look into the EV difference here of our best bluff candidates, I mean, we have some like random ace, ten, four, four, I mean, ace, ten, four, four is unblocking a lot of the busted straight draws. In some ways, like eight, nine combos, like the six and the five is unblocked. Ace, jack, ten, deuce, ripping the deuce blocker, ace, jack, four, four, ace, nine, eight, five, blocking the eight. Yeah, the eight will make up a lot of our river bluffs and some busted straight draws without showdown for us. So when you're constructing your range, it's always important to see like how are things developing when you take a certain line, you take this hand into the bet betting line. Uh, so it looks like when we don't have a straight draw and we don't have a pair blocker, we wanna be a bit more careful with those aces. Maybe this one belongs also in there, could be starting to check, looks like the nine is just about good enough for us to start betting or keep betting, so ten, ten, three, three. It's a weird one, I guess it has a, it has an interesting runout, so we can bluff blocking the straight and hmm, maybe our hand is just good enough to play check call on the turn, so let's say we check the turn. I mean, it would be weird, ten, ten, three, three, but it does retain equity against pretty much everything, because we have both outs, now we're just check folding the turn, looking to bluff different hands. King, king, ten, five. Hmm, straight draw blockers and a ten and a five. Maybe we wanna bet, it's interesting, because with the hearts, we're unblocking some of the floats, so it makes it more likely my opponent is bluffing, I guess. Or not holding a hand that is that good, king, king, ten, five. We're certainly betting a lot of hands in the turn, so this hand wants to check and then check call. Instead of betting, I mean, the EV is already plummeting quite a bit right there. Here we have the nuts, hmm. I mean, because we bet one-third, we still will get floated here by a bunch of different hands, so I think we just wanna bet. Yeah, these pair boards are, are tricky, because we get called, in theory at least, very often on the flop, eighty percent of the time is gonna continue, and then we have to think about how to barrel properly. Maybe check folding this one, we're blocking his floats, the nuts with a seven. I mean, I would probably bet, seems unlikely he's gonna bet. Okay, we have too many blockers, okay. Ace, queen, deuce, deuce, I'll probably just check, because there's so many bad rivers with the straight completing cards. Can also see reasons to bet for value though, it's a tricky one. Yeah, we're checking, we're not looking to blow the pot further, it's gonna be tricky. Ace is eight, six, in this case, we are blocking some of the slow plays from the flop, eight, seven, eight, eight, unblocking kings. Unblocking kings, unblocking the queen. Maybe good enough to bet? Yeah, so ace, ace, eight, six, because this hand, I think, if we do bet and river comes in as a deuce, we're gonna bet maybe even pot for value. Right? So we bet, turn, get called, river breaks as a deuce, and we have ace, ace, eight, six. So this hand goes third, third, third pot. It's an interesting one. Hmm, we saw this stuff before, king, king, ten, five. I think with this one, wanted to play check. Here we're betting. It's definitely close for either one of them. Just betting the nuts. Here, I don't really see reasons to bet. Jack, jack, eight, six. I mean, we probably have the best hand a good amount of the time. I don't really see reasons to bet. It's just weird what to do against the bet. So if we check and he bets half, I don't think we can fold. We can still hit an eight or a jack. Oh, it looks like we are folding. That's sick. Okay, so we're playing check fold with jack, jack, eight, six. We probably have enough overpairs to just check call those. Ace, king, queen, eight. I mean, I would just keep betting against the straight draws, even though the rivers can be a bit uncomfortable. Looks like we're checking. It's not a big difference there. What is the plan? The plan is to check and then call. I mean, we're not gonna put in a stack here. So we play check call, turn, let's say the river bricks. So it's probably gonna be like our, one of, one of our premium bluff catchers, the ace, king, queen, eight. I'm blocking all the straight draws, so it goes into that function. We check, we face the river jam. We're never folding this hand, right? Yeah, so the functionality of this hand is more like, let's start checking and and um bluff catching more so than building the pot. Makes sense. Okay. Just the nuts, probably just betting. I mean, we do block the ten, nine. Let's see, full house, nut boat is betting about half the time. We're looking to bet specifically when we are unblocking the straight draws. So the ten in our hand makes our hand. Um, so we have king, queen, queen, ten in this case. Well, I gotta look into the queens here for a second. If I filter for queens, I can just use EV difference and sort by that and just be like, hmm, what hand really wants to check when we have queens? Hmm, I mean, queen, queen, jack, jack apparently, and jack, ten. But obviously the seven, queen, queen, seven wants to check. And what hands really wants to bet? Unblocking all these straight draws, not holding an eight, nine, ten, five, four. We definitely wanna bet. Kind of, that's kind of the heuristic there. Here we check. Uh, ace, queen, jack, ten. Hmm, probably better to start check calling, sort of keep betting. How does this hand play against like turn, river barrels? I mean, we will obviously check call the turn and then make river decisions. So say turn, we face half, we have ace, king, ace, jack, ten. Play call. There are actually some jams in there as a sort of bluff, but most of them are calling. Back to the brick. We check and the guy rips. I would, I would say some of these hands are certainly calling here. Yeah, so half those hands are looking to call the river on a deuce. If the river is a ten, which is giving us two pair, but at the same time completing a lot of the straights, it's, it's a pretty weird spot. Uh, we're calling quite a bit of those. But the thing I'm looking at as well is the EV of those calls, right? So if you play check call, turn, check call, river, we are basically indifferent with these kind of hands. And you you need some creative opponents for sure to play that line. You need some opponents that are quite creative. Like on this runout, like what is jamming? Some sort of eight X combo, eight, nine, ten X, like ten, nine, eight, nine is just jamming the river after bettering, barreling the turn. So if we look into imposition and we filter for the bluffs, so basically we're saying, you can also use the equity graph. So in the equity graph, imposition, you can see here on the button, as it plummets down like that, these are all the bluffs for the guy that is in position. Let's see the button. Uh, yeah, actually, we don't know. Um, we can say, I wanna see hands that are potting. Queen, ten, nine, eight. So queen, ten, nine, eight for imposition after betting turn has very little equity. It only has fifteen percent, but it has all the blockers that you want. I mean, this hand is pretty natural to bet. But what if he has something like ace, king, nine, eight? Yeah, you want him, you want the guy to have aces basically, so you're looking to have the the ten, nine, eight. Yeah, this kind of stuff. So this filters like all the hands. Uh, ten is in there. Yeah, so here we can see like the, all the bluffs. I mean, a lot of the bluffs are intuitive, but queen, jack, jack, six, for example, like people might not actually start barreling this in the turn to 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 jam the river. A lot of players admit in lower stakes, they might think that these hands have a ton of showdown against the three betting range and they start checking on the turn. So I think that's a a big part of it as well. But the reason I like to look into this is also to understand like how I'm supposed to be playing imposition myself and like what kind of hints I'm gonna start opening up. So let's say you're in a three-bet pot, you call imposition, call the flop bet with the queen, jack, ten, nine. A hand like queen, jack, or even queen, jack, jack, nine, right? So that hand basically, at least some of the time, is gonna barrel, turn, jam, river, not just checking back. Or queen, ten, nine, eight, or something like that. Obviously, queen, ten, nine, eight is like a full frequency turn bet, river jam. And what if the river is something like a deuce? Are we still gonna bluff jam the queen, eight, where we are block, where we are winning sometimes? I think we still are. We're unblocking aces and kings, and we have super good blockers. So, yeah. So like opening up these hands in the turn to set up a river jam makes a lot of sense. Okay, we're gonna wrap it up for today. We looked in the, in the beginning, we looked into some of the newly integrated note locked sims. In case you do have access to PLO Trainer, make sure to check them out. You can find them if you head over to Preflop. You go into the four max solutions, there is a new tab exploitative, and we added uh over fifty exploitative pre-flop sims. Read the description, you can see it right there. For example, button calls forty against cut-off open in three bets twelve. Uh, or small blind, three bets fifteen percent versus button, so kind of a maniac in the small blind. Or there's a tight plan, the cut-off open raising twenty-five percent, like what does that mean in terms of adjustments? So you can find all those note locked sims right now in the trainer under the Preflop tab for four max. Obviously, these note locked sims apply also for six max and seven max games, but we ran the sim in a smaller, more compact format. And because only four players really matter for the note lock scenario. So all these note locked sims are now available in the trainer. And then then we headed into some three-bet pots and look into flop, turn, rivers. When you are working on three-bet pots or any spot really, always ask yourself, what's the functionality of these hands over multiple streets? How am I supposed to play this out? And also on the other side, how is my opponent supposed to react and play on their side? And the more you understand how both sides of the strategy look like, the easier it will be for you to play well and also understand where the shortcomings are in your opponent's strategy in reality. So with that, we're gonna wrap it up for today. Uh, keep your eyes out for next week where we are, as every year, opening up our Black Friday offer. This year, we do have a very, very big bonus that um centers around the Cash Game World Championship. A lot of um, a lot of very valuable hours added to the the offer, to the yearly offer that we always have. Will be presented next week, and until then, we're out for the day.